I'm calling the April meeting of the City Council of Washington to order. I'd like to welcome our new city clerk, Wanda Dingler. Welcome, Wanda. She'll be keeping minutes and be keeping track of things for us. Let's stand now, and I'm going to give a brief implication. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, just this past weekend, we celebrated the miracle of your resurrection from the dead and your coming back to us to save us from our sins. How are we worthy of this, given the general status of the human race? We thank you for it. We pray that we can follow your will and do better going forward in the future. We ask your blessings tonight on the City Council of Washington, that we have good, healthy discussions, that we reach decisions that are in the best interests of the city of Washington. All of this, in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. For the pledge of allegiance, I'll ask Colonel Andy Anderson to lead us to the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The initial, well, the first thing we need to do tonight is approve the agenda. It's not specifically in that order, but I want to go ahead and get that done. You have the agenda, councilman, you have the agenda before you. I have asked, there is one modification. Item 13, city administrative topics, we've asked to move up to just after item six, and we do that to accommodate the engineers who are here tonight to give a report on the chlorination system for our water, for our water system. They've got a long way to travel. Once this meeting's done, we want to let them get make their report and get on their way. But subject to that modification, do I have any comments or approval of the agenda as proposed otherwise?
So moved.
Motion to adopt the agenda, subject to the one modification I stated? All right. Do I have a second? Yes. Discussion. All in favor of modifying the agenda as stated, please raise your hand. All right. The agenda is modified accordingly. City Administrator, you'll come up after the public hearing is adjourned.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is item five, the joint public hearing on the 2023 CDVG project. Ann Floyd will be here to facilitate it. Ann is not able to be here tonight. Tell me your name again.
I'm Linda Gruh Holfman.
Thank you, Linda. You're here for Ann tonight. Thank you.
Nobody says my name.
[laughing]
Okay. Ann, just wanted to let you know she had a family emergency. We're submitting a joint application for the city and the county to replace water lines to Red Hundred, I'm going to get the number right here, to residents that live outside of the target area, outside the city limits. And the reason it has to be joint application, the city runs the water system, but the residents live in the county, so we're working on that, and I left Form 11 for the city and the county to sign. We're going to ask for $1 million. There's three-inch water main around Lexington and down Houston neighborhood. I don't know what I did with my mic. Oh, excuse me. There we go. And I have a map if anybody would like to see the target area that runs down in Laura, Riverside, Wynton, Susan, and Forest. There's a three-inch main going to go six-inch main, and they need some fire protection, and the pipes are really old, and we need to upgrade. So that's all we've been working on. The application is due June 2nd, and how they work is you get 50 points, you get a maximum of 390 points. You get 50 points for program feasibility, and strategy is for 50 points. That's for the preliminary engineer report will be, tell us what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. We'll pre-design the project, so we'll know the cost. The most important thing to get the most points to get funded is need, it's 125 points, and that requires that you have good documentation of the need. We've had several people who said they don't have good water pressure. The fire department's already written a letter of support talking about the need for fire protection out there. So what will happen is Ann will go back and see who didn't write this letter of support and try to get some more letters of support, because if you can prove need, you have a very good chance of getting funded. Program impact, which is cost per person, absolute poverty, percent of poverty, median household income, you really can't do much about the median household income and the poverty. That's based on census data. But the cost per person, and it's based on need, if we, sometimes it's $5,000, depending on the needs, you can go up to $40,000, $50,000 a person, depending on what's going on. And then we have a leverage of additional resources. The county and the city, I don't know if the county is, but I know the city's going to put some match in the project to make it more feasible. You do not have a revitalization area strategy, so you won't get those 20 points, and it's not a state priority project, but you will have some robust citizen participation activities. That's why we have the signing chiefs over there to show that people came and really were interested in this project. And then you get five points for revenues to proceed, and you're not going to return any of our RLF funds, but this is a good project, and it's very needed. And there are some fair housing brochures and fair housing posters in Spanish and English on the table. Because this money is HUD money, you are required to ensure that everybody understands fair housing and that they're practicing that, so.
Mr. Holfman, let me, let me ask, what do you need us as a council to do tonight with regard to?
You have to adopt the resolution, I mean pass the resolution to submit the application and.
Has that already been passed?
Since you could find, man, join in.
Yeah, go right again.
This is a, you all remember last year, we submitted a request that did not get funded last year, and this would replace the water line if we start there about, right about the rail EMC, go out of likes and turn in, go all through Jackson Heights, and we're going to create a loop, come out the backside of Jackson Heights and tie it back into Washington Heights. So we have a continuous loop. Right now, part of the lower water quality is that that's an add-in, that's a terminal point where the water stops in that neighborhood. And so you get more residue buildup in the pipes and all, and then add more fire protection in that loop. So what we're really asking is essentially, you're approving us to resubmit the same proposal again this year.
So you're asking us to approve, you're submitting the same proposal, is that correct?
Yes.
That's right. It's the CSRA that submits it on our behalf.
Can we make a motion to do that now?
I don't know. That's a, no chance.
One second. I believe, Mr. Mayor, since this is a public hearing, we need to see if anybody.
You need to do the resolution adoption in the actual city council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, not here, I mean, not in the public hearing.
Do we have a written copy of the resolution?
Yes, I gave it to Wanda.
Okay.
Yes. I gave her everything she needed to get taken care of, but you need to wait till the regular city council meeting to adopt the resolution. Thank you very much.
Okay, I got it.
I'm Mr. Fleming.
All right. So are we looking for comments and or questions from the public?
Only if they have any.
Since there is none, can we then?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve this resolution?
Is it good? Do you want it to be?
No, that's fine. If Mr. Mayor has any comments, you can feel free to move ahead. We're closing the public hearing and asking the council if they want to approve the resolution.
Yes, sir.
I'm a resident of Jackson Heights. I got plenty of water pressure. What are they talking?
It's not a question of pressure, it's a pressure, it's a question of quality.
Some of the people don't have the same water pressure that you have. It's different for everybody.
Several years ago, they went in there and put all sewage lines, all water lines, everything.
There's been no new water lines lately.
Just sewage line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, I want to bring the public hearing to a close then, and let's see. We need then a motion before the council to approve this resolution to authorize the application. Is that, is that correct, Linda?
Yes, it is.
All right. Can I have such a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember, seconded? Do I have a second? Second. Second, and any discussion?
Question. Can we, before my public hearing, regular council?
He just closed the meeting and went back in regular council.
We're back, I'm sorry, we're back in regular council. All right. All right, now, yes, ma'am.
And then you need to do item B to award, recommend the engineer.
Right, that's, that's coming.
Okay.
Okay, okay. All right, motion has been, we're back in regular session. Motion has been made then to approve the resolution to authorize the application for this, for this grant. Motion seconded, and any further discussion? All right, all in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. All right, it passes unanimously?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, item B is a part of that. If you'll recall, Ann Floyd met with us in city council, she had an evaluation committee. They evaluated the firms that were conducting engineering work on that, and it was a resounding support for Carter and Sloop as the engineering firm. So we would need a second approval here tonight to approve her recommendation of Carter and Sloop as the engineering firm for that project.
So moved.
Motion to approve Carter and Sloop. Seconded. Any discussion? Of course, yes, councilman.
What is it going to cost the city for Carter and the engineering firm? What it's going to cost?
If I may, we have a representative here, I'll be glad, and he'll be up next. You want me to have him sort of?
No, I just want, just one figure.
Brian, you want to address this a little bit?
I think that we agreed that we would write the preliminary engineering report for free, and then if the project is awarded, then we'll charge typical 9% for engineering and construction administration, and then 3% for observation, which is the same.
So we come out with a grant instead of out of the city?
That'd be part of our match in the grant, yes.
Yeah, there is a match from the city for the application itself, but yeah, that will come, the construction and everything will be part of that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So change orders, if there's any change orders, once you guys get in there, y'all see something else that needs to be done, how will we be able to address those?
If it's changes that increase the contract amount, you won't be able to get more from CDVG. We try to be pretty conservative with our cost estimates and everything to be sure that we don't go over that amount, otherwise we'd have to, obviously, or anything that goes.
I can say something on that. The grant application always has 10% for contingency of construction.
All right, any further questions among council? Discussion among council? Seeing none, can we have a vote to approve Carter and Sloop? Yes, councilman.
I know we've proposed this before, but what is the matching amount for City of Washington?
It's 10%ed.
Rarely.
I believe it's 10%, correct?
This particular?
Oh, no, it's different now. They've recaptivated. I wish I had hands of votes, and I could tell you what y'all say we're going to put in, but it's got to be at least, I think it's 47/5 you have to put in. But most of my, I did this for a bunch of cities, and so does Ann, most everybody right now in the building is putting in 100%, I mean $100,000.
About 10% then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, some put in, I have some to put in, 50% match, but most people do about 10% match, just to get the additional 20 points or resources, because you're competing with a lot of people across the state.
Okay. All right, are we ready for a vote on this motion to approve Carter and Sloop as the engineer of this project? All right, motion. Did I say all in favor? Yes, seconded. All right. All in favor of the motion to appoint Carter and Sloop as the engineer for this? Please show your hand. All right, unanimously approved, all right?
Mr. Mayor, would you allow me to go ahead now, since we're on that, we're on that point to move into the regular, regular meeting and discuss our contract for the dechlorination system?
Yeah, I think we had changed the agenda.
Yeah, we made that up.
That's right. All right.
Since that, I will call on Brian Caffrey to come to the podium.
And Jerry asked me to put together a one-page summary, so I got one for each of the council members as well as the mayor. So this essentially summarizes.
Thank you.
So last year, Washington approved to use $1 million of the American Resting Plant Act, money that they received, to have that money go towards water treatment plant improvements. Approximately $213,000 of that was used towards new high-service pumps and soft starts at the Aonier Water Treatment Plant. That essentially ensured that the water treatment plant was able to pump the 2 million gallons per day of water capacity that it's able to do so. So there's approximately, after engineering reviews, there's approximately $726,500 that can be, that can go towards this dechlorination system project. Essentially, at the water treatment plant, every once in a while, you have to backwash, essentially clean out the water treatment plant, and that water has to be wasted into the environment, and since the potable water that's pouring, and EPE now requires that municipalities dechlorinate that water so that it doesn't cause adverse effects to aquatic life. So we got approved for engineering and permitting, the Environmental Protection Division approved the plant's specifications. So on April 4th, we had a bid opening for the dechlorination systems, and the lowest bidder is All South Contractors in the amount of $751,100. They're a great contractor, they do quality work. I've worked with them on previous projects before, and they're an honest contractor. Since it is a little bit over budget, we did have a little bit of a contingency in the bid with a supplemental work allowance as well as a testing allowance. So dividing those allowances by half will get us to a contract amount of, I believe, $726,100, which will fit into the budget for the already approved money from ARPA towards these projects. Right now, the operators are having to dechlorinate with tablets, and it's not very effective. It's very labor-intensive, because you have to go out there and manually put up tablets. Definitely not the most cost-effective solution in the long term either, and since it is not very effective, you could get fined by EPE if they find that you're out of compliance. So since the money is available and it's, you know, within budget and it's a, you know, great contractor, I recommend that the project is awarded to All South Contractors. Any questions?
Does this system have any kind of detective, detectives or anything of that sort as far as the chlorination?
Yeah, so it's going to have, well, already at the water treatment plant, they detect for chlorine as it is. So knowing that chlorine residual, we'll have chemical feed pumps and we'll be feeding sodium bisulfite to treat, to lower that chlorination level, and we can adjust the feed rate from those chemical feed pumps accordingly to make sure that it gets down below the 0.1 milligrams per liter or whatever it is that EPE requires. Also, we have a, we're installing metering manuals at each of the water treatment plants so that'll replace existing meters that are aging, and it'll also provide the city to manually read the flow rate, which is a requirement for EPE to do that once a month, and there is no ability to do that how they currently read the flows at the time being. So that'll also put you into minus for that aspect as well.
Question? Yes, sir?
Yes. So the All South Contractors, have you guys been working in the past?
Yeah, I've, I've worked with them on several projects in different communities, not here in Washington, but I've always had a great working relationship with them, and they do quality work. They're not a contractor that's trying to, you know, nickel and dime, trying to change order them to death or anything like that. They're honest contractors, and, you know, they're going to do their work based on, or they're going to price the job based on, you know, what they can do it for, and not necessarily for what they think, you know, to maximize their profit. As you can see, there's pretty substantial gap between All South and other contractors, and, you know, even though they could probably increase their bid, knowing that they'll still be the lowest bidder, they're going to do it for what they think they can do it for.
As far as the monitoring, you guys be doing the monitoring?
Like the construction administration on the job? Yes, sir.
Now, do we, do you need a motion from us tonight to approve All South?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and they want to get started at least ordering materials on April 20th.
Okay.
And then in their bid, they said that they could be completed by November 1st. So this project kind of fit in their window of projects, they're like all contractors right now, they're extremely busy, but we tried to line it up so that way we could get it to fit in their schedule while they have enough gaps.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
This is AIA, this is the Rescue Act money that we, they voted on?
Yes, sir. So we're, we're just further down the path where we approved the use of the money for the system. They've engaged in the bidding process and brought to us now the lowest bidder in that project. So this is, this is sort of the final completion in the steps that council has already approved.
So I thought they was buying pumps, so this is part of?
Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, that was part of what the money was being used for. About $213,000 was already used towards the pumps at the Aonier Water Treatment Plant. The remaining money is going to be used for the dechlorination system.
So how much was the motion to use all, all the ERP motherfuckers?
Yes, sir. Well, not all of them.
It was a million, I believe.
Was. We used some for COVID.
We used $93,000 for the COVID premium plan for employees, and they used the balance for these two projects.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Last question. As it relates to new businesses or new homes and so forth, what is your estimate of capacity in homes? What I'm asking is, with this new technologies, this new pieces that we're installing, what, how many homes would we, would you guess we would be able to serve with this new capacity or businesses?
These dechlorination systems itself won't address capacity. It's addressing regulations from the Environmental Protection Division. I will say that the high-service pumps that were installed earlier does address capacity, not necessarily in increased capacity, but allowing Washington to properly meet the capacity that it's permitted to do so. The old pumps were aging and weren't actually able to produce or pump the water that Washington permitted to do so. I believe each of the water treatment plants are capable of doing about 2 million gallons per day. Right now, the city's around 1 million gallons per day, so there's plenty of capacity in Washington's water treatment, or yeah, water system to serve in growth.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Yes, councilman.
The main reason why we passed this to spend this money was because of the requirement by the state that we had as, might as well say a zero chlorination back into the lake.
It's not zero, but.
Lot closer to zero than what we read.
Correct.
Or we could have got to with our system. And when is the date deadline for the state? Is it end of the year?
That, that deadline was already in the past, so that's why the operators are using tablets right now to dechlorinate. So that, that regulation's already in place. They're doing this manually kind of as a temporary basis, but it's definitely not a good permanent solution for, you know, moving forward in the future.
All right, I'd like a motion to approve the recommendation of All South Contractors.
A motion.
Motion. Seconded. Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seeing four, all right. All opposed? To oppose. Motion passes, and the city will, will award the contractor, All South Contractors, per Carter's, the recommendation.
All right, thank you, and I'll leave this with one.
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the next item moved up on your agenda was city administrator topic A. The administrator asked me to explain this to you. You all received in your package a right-of-way entry agreement with Clean Spark. As you know, you're, they're a big user for you, you know, and y'all are putting lines and equipment in out there. A right-of-way entry agreement is very common when the city's going to go work on their property and install all this. It's almost identical to the same one that they have with MEAG for MEAG's work out there. If you have any questions regarding the right-of entry agreement, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you. If not, Mr. Mayor, you'll need a motion for one of your council members to allow you to sign the right-of-way entry agreement.
Okay. Council members, what if you give a motion?
I will.
All right. Councilwoman Dunn, second, Councilwoman Wagner. All right, any further discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
So this agreement just only be used for the city workers to gain access?
That's right, they have that. It's very common. Later on, you'll, as you go in this process, they'll, they'll send an easement proposal to us, which will, this is just a stopgap until you get the easements filed at the courthouse, but this will allow your city workers to go out there and do what they need to do.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. I'd like a vote, all in favor of the motion to allow the mayor to sign the right-of-entry agreement. All in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my topics. Thank you, Mr. City Administrator. All right, next item will be the approval of minutes from our council meetings in February and March. And I know we had the March minutes in the packet, I don't know if we had the February minutes. It was in there?
Everyone has it, and I should, you should have it too.
Okay, okay. Any discussion or additions or changes to the February and March minutes?
Mr. Mayor, while father looking them over, I just want to commend our city clerk. I've watched her in there with the speakers up and listening, and she's learning your voices and learning who motioned, who seconded, but I appreciate the work that she's done to, to work through and learning how to, how to pick up on your voices in this audio and, and convert that into the minutes.
Okay, Ann?
I have one matter, I can't see its correction because it's not in here, but at our last meeting, the mayor's topic, he had about, I think he addressed the ethics complaints, I guess how we would proceed with picking the board or how we would actually do that. I just want to note that I did ask that the mayor reduce himself from any advisements for how we proceed with the ethics complaint, and I don't see it here. I just like to make sure that we had it in.
Okay, good. All right, any further comments on the February/March minutes? If not, can I have a vote, a vote to, rather, a motion to approve the minutes of February and March? Mr. Mayor?
Just looking at one piece here on the minutes for March. I recommended that, let's see, Dr. Faneo, wait a minute. I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
It's good, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the February and March minutes?
Is the motion going to include my corrections? My addition, my addition to the correction?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll make that, we'll make that addition in a minute. Do you have another correction?
Oh, yes, okay, that's the one I was looking for. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Congress.
Go ahead.
I recommended that Dr. Faneo on the minutes, recommended by appointment of Dr. Alicia Faneo to the URA board, and the minutes record that I said no. Colors and Hill, nay.
Okay, see, you want to change your to?
He made the motion, he made the motion, so he would be a.
I made the motion.
He says nay at the end, it should.
It was a unanimous vote, and I don't know how you got.
I think it was a 6-0 vote, as I recall.
That's what we, correction.
All right, so we need to correct the minutes to reflect that the motion passed unanimously.
Unanimously.
Okay.
And it'd be good if we continued this process of, you know, saying who voted which way, that would be good also.
Okay, yes, okay.
Well, to keep that in mind is keep the minutes on these things with those corrections.
Mr. Mayor, one other one on the March minutes, one, two, three, four, five, paragraphs down was the, just the same, same issue of counting the yeses and the nays. So if you look at this, this was the motion by myself, seconded by Hill, to adopt. So, if you look at this, this was the motion by myself, seconded by Hill to adopt the G M A's Resolution on Civility. Motion passed four yays and one nay. Then it lists those who said yea and those who said nay. So, actually, it's five yays and one nay. Of course, just a typo should show five, but to address what Councilman Hill just said, it does, at least this one, it shows by individual names, who, who voted nay and who voted yea.
I think the one exception, if I may, the only time we wouldn't list them is if it passes unanimously, and that is everybody.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we give the.
Change the four and five.
Okay, all right. All right, any further comments on the minutes for February, March? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February and March? Pass of the vote, seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes of February, March, please raise your hand. All right, minutes are approved. Thank you. Next is meeting agenda. I think we've addressed that already. Put the change on that. Uh, next is public forum. Those of you who signed up to address council. John, did you have some? Please, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll make a brief, and then I'll depart. Very good news tonight for Wilkes County. We have appointed Javon Pinkston as our new reporter for Wilkes County. Thanks for the growth. We've had in other areas allowing us to move Javon back here full-time. Uh, we are delighted with that. A little bit about Javon. She's a Washington Wilkes Tiger. Uh, graduated with two bachelor's degrees, one from Augusta College and the other from the Ivy League Dartmouth College, and holds a master's in cybersecurity from Augusta University pamphlet college. So, she's been with us now about a year and a half with the paper. And we've moved her around as we needed to to cover the bases up front, but now she's back home in Wilkes County, lives here. And we'll cover all of this, and we'll harass you continuously on getting every piece of paper that crosses your desk as part of the public record. So, I would like to brag on having her on board. And the final thing, more impressive than everything else, she's a fine welder and a mantel player. So, I wanna welcome her and thank y'all for having her. She'll be reporting from now on. Turning the meeting over to her, and thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you, John. Javon, we're welcome. Glad to have another Ivy Leagueer on board here. All right, let's see. Next item on the agenda, I think there's so much, some other folks out of the public comments, didn't they? We don't, no, they, no of the sign up for public comments? Oh, we got a bunch of them. Okay, Angela Booker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to address you all. Couple of concerns. I'm not sure if you all are aware of the shooting that took place last week. A young man was shot on, on his way to work. We need something, we need a plan of action to provide activities for our youth. The young ones have activities, but the teenagers don't. Another concern, again, the council is here voting to spend money, and you don't have financials in front of you. That's the concern. The, uh, the pump and the filtration system that was spoke about, I understand that $250,000 twice for the pumps and then another $450,000. And I believe the young man mentioned a price of 700 and some thousand for the filtration myself. So, my question is, where is that additional money coming from? It's a concern because citizens, seniors, dis, disabled citizens, and citizens throughout the community are suffering due to these utility bills. And we need to make sure that we're able to take care of them because it's their money that this city runs off of. So, if we have extra money, the citizens need to be taken care of. And that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first one, addressed the shootings. Those shootings that actually took place, it wasn't by kids, it was by adults. Second, I just wanna make note to the public that the city of Washington does not have a police department. There's a shared department issue. I think that county commissioners need to be brought in to the conversation as well as the sheriff. But we do not have a contract with the shared department, and the shared department does a great job on what they do. They need more commitment from the public as far as where these shootings are actually coming from. But, you know, those are, those adults that was in the shootings, bad shooting. And as also, we've had numerous conversations about shared department. We will continue those conversations with those, our shared department. But I do think that, you know, if there's crime is going on and there's issues, it needs to, at this point in time, be directed to the shared department.
Thank you.
And one more question, one more note, two minutes. You know, isn't it said that we don't have financials in front of us? There's nothing financial as well as the pump that's being spent. And we do have those bids in front of us, which shows the financials or how much it's gonna cost, what the money's gonna come from. So, I don't want nobody in the public to leave here misinformed about we don't have financials in front of us.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, next was Josh Owens.
Thank you, board, for hearing me underdressed. I just got off of work. You know, I spoke with you about a building. I'm just asking for the board as a whole, if we consider. I'm from Anderson, South Carolina. I've been here since January. I was a pastor in Anderson and run a youth, youth program for way over 10 years, which we funded pretty much all out of our pocket, saved a lot of lives. Thank you. I'm not speaking to the board, but I want to do something for children. You're right, they might've been adults, but it starts with the kids. The kids turn into adults, so that guide starts very early. So, what you know then is what you know being later. So, um, we've been in that program. I work with V S S kids. I work with a ton of stuff. At our program, we had computers, we love for school. Everybody was boxing. Everybody said, you're teaching kids to fight. Kids that learn to box, it's not fighting, it's a sport.
Correct.
They tend to be more maintained. They don't tend to fight as fast because they're not worried as much. They're more in control of themselves and their emotions. Our program also provides scholarship for college, and it provides a lot of stuff. Not only that, but we also did a mentorship on Friday nights. It included Bible studies since I was a pastor. We've got every kid to walk into the building every Friday night. So, I know that buildings have been empty for a long time. I've heard that from the whole town. Um, y'all got a ton of buildings, whether it be city buildings or not, in this town, it's empty. Um, I'm just asking for reconsider, reconsideration, or maybe just for the board to vote. Some of the people on this board, on the board that I've been going through since January, they were behind the youth program on that end of it. So, I'm asking for y'all to maybe look at it, see what you can do. I know they have emails of what I've done. I was the president of South Carolina Boxing Commission for years. And friend or salvation for the boxing club for two years. So, the boxing's great, but I care more about their salvation and how they make out in the community. If the boxing's just a part of our program.
Josh, are you asking for like some financial assistance?
Um, no, I'm actually asking, when, when we first started talking about this, it's January, people on the board that's, that's on the board here, people that's on the floor that's part of the board suggested the, I think it's called the Booker Building, I come to this. It's the one beside the pole. It's come and gone for years, but been empty for a long time.
Yep.
Um, just actually use of that building is what I'm looking for. Outside of the building, it would cost nothing.
What's, Mayor?
I remember you going to the Parkland Rec.
Yes.
Did it die, you used the Parkland Rec?
No, it's not that they deny me. It's there's always something going on there. There's basketball, this and that. And boxing as a whole is a more structured thing. It takes a little more room, a little more self-discipline without kids over here doing this, watching the basketball, etc. right here, or this and that. So, it's a little tighter mentor programs.
They have a building in the back.
Sir?
They have a building in the back of the Parkland Rec. They offer you that building?
A building in the back of, I'm not saying.
Parkland Rec, yes.
I'm not saying. That's the building we're talking about. The one beside the pole?
Y'all talking about two different buildings.
Okay, and where's that building?
Behind Parkland Rec Gym.
It's a classroom. It's a small classroom.
How big is it?
You just doing boxing. Booker Center is used for something else.
What's it being used for?
Education of citizens.
When did that start?
You say you just moved it?
Yeah, I know. I've been here since January.
How long been in Vegas since you been here?
Sir?
How long have the building been vacant since you been here?
It's been empty the whole time of May.
No, I don't think so.
That's what I was talking about, these guys.
Not, not true.
So, your board is lying to me? That's the board. So, I'm asking you.
Let's, let's look at this.
See, I'm not arguing. I'm just asking the board. I'm, I'm speaking to people that's been on the board while I've been there, for saying around here.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The Booker Building, we, you know, we have plans to use that building, so it, it would be a good fit for. Currently, uh, being the city administrator, we've had great conversation with workforce development. Our goal is to put a workforce development affiliate program just there. Workforce development affiliate program, the workforce.
And what's that?
It's where we have people get jobs, find jobs, get trained for jobs. So, we've been a lot of conversation with workforce development out of Thompson. Hopefully, that'll be, you know, within the next coming weeks, we can get some headway on that. And also, we've talked about having an innovation center for when kids leave high school, they have a place to go.
Well, you have a good touch, is what I'm.
But what I would say, what I would say is, one, you know, you went to the Parkland Rec first, and you didn't ask them to take a vote on it. I think that probably would've been better appropriate.
Didn't ask them to vote on what, sir?
Vote on, you put your, put your.
Actually, they did, and they.
Put a deal vote on it?
They went with it. They're pushing the legal money-wise. Now, they said they'd help fund some.
How much it's gonna cost?
How much is it gonna cost? $230 something dollars a month.
On child, on child insurance, how much it's gonna cost?
For child insurance, $8 a year. That's more than they play, play anything.
$8 a year?
$8 a year. I'm asking for them to pay that. That's something that we raise money for the parents that pay that, but you can't play basketball for $8 a year. Yeah, and that's for a couple of months, this is your round.
Okay, well, well, what I'm, what I'm trying to help you with, while, while, before you get all sarcastic.
I'm not sarcastic, sir. I'm just.
Well, let me help you find a building, and that building would be the old gym, not the gym, but the workroom that was over at the old school.
Is that, is where's that here?
It's, it's right over there at the Gordon Street High School. It's a, it's a blue and gold building over there. Everybody can start to track. So, I'm all for trying to help kids and do things, but I think that that building over there is, is big enough to put a ring in there. It used to be the old weight training facility over there. Now, do we own that or is that U R A?
I think that's U R A, plus U R A.
Is it U R A?
Not the metal building. Not, not the metal building.
We own the metal building, not the old, not the old sessions.
No, I'm talking about where the, on the backside, the track, where we used to house the, um.
The metal building is ours.
It's ours?
That is ours.
Okay, so I would recommend that you put together a proposal. Share it with our city manager. He'll look at it and share it with us, and then we'll make you, we'll come and talk.
Yeah, let's, if you would, get this to us ahead of the time of the council meetings. So, we, we got time to think about it, talk about it, ask questions. Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very passionate about kids. Listen, I'm watching me kids go to the ground.
I, I think it's a great program.
I'm watching me parents not have father figures that end up doing the shoes.
Sure.
And doing stuff like that.
We, we support what you're doing.
I apologize for taking that one. I'm just very passionate about you. Like I said, I actually have a, a young man, he's no longer a child, that, that came all the way from New Jersey. He just got back from Syria. It was part of my program for a long time. They just wanted to tell you about the program, Councilman. Great. Well, thank y'all for hearing me.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? As a head of Parks and Recs, we've seen Josh come. He's, he's been trying to get something off the ground for a while. The Booker Center has been in, in vacant since summer of last year. And, you know, we don't have any room at Parks and Recs. We can't tell him that he can come in and set up a boxing facility and have the training and keep everything separate. It's just not gonna work at Parks and Recs. So, I would like to ask everybody in the board, if you're not gonna reconsider the Booker Center and really take it serious, we're trying to find something to help him out because he's, he's got a good program.
We've got another public comment entry. Rodney Welborn about the boxing program. Is that the lady?
He had a lady. He actually is doing a baseball game today.
Okay, that's already covered, all right. Tell us your name, please.
How you doing this morning? My name is Frederick Kenneth Benson III, age 23. I'm gonna give y'all a little brief about myself. Came all the way from Syria, did 10 months over there, stationed at Tid Mountain Division in Port Drum, New York. You know. And it's good to be here. And it's good to speak on behalf of a mentor, father figure, someone who is the example of discipline, Mr. Josh Owens. Me and my little brother, my little brother Khalil Benson, he's over there in Japan right now, serving over there in the Navy. So, to speak on the program, the program, the program creates discipline for kids younger. Started when I was 15. 15, came from a broken home, angry kid. But when I met Mr. Josh Owens, he put me on the right path. His program created discipline. He checked our report cards, make sure we did our homework, make sure we had a loving environment. Boxing created structure, made us not fight, made us use the gifts that we had inside of the boxing ring instead of out on the streets. Instead of picking up a weapon, we learned how to use our hands. So, what I'm saying he could do for this community, he can do a lot. Because if you touch the youth while they're young, then they can transition into growing and proper adults. For example, he touched me when I was young, 15 years old. He gave me the spirit. He gave me the guidance. He gave me the motivation. When I told him I wanted to go to the military, he was all for it. He said, yes, sir. Go ahead, go ahead. When I went overseas, he was all for it. He told me I have a good time. Now, a portion of my overseas time was in combat. It was a struggle. I gave Mr. Josh Owens a call, and he gave me the motivation I needed to make it through. The other half of that was in Kuwait doing transportation, motorized transportation, driving trucks and all that. I was gone for a long time, but he still kept posts, still kept tabs on me, made sure that I was all right. Same thing with my brother out there in Japan. Now, when I see him do for kids in the community, he worked wonders. I seen him take kids off the street. I seen him feed kids. I seen him put kids in the right homes, make sure they go home right and correct. I seen him make kids do their homework. I seen him check up on kids at school. He even had a van. He used to pick us all up from school. We'll go practice boxing. After that, he'll take us all home. We would travel with the boxing. Also, he took us to Bible study in church on Sundays. This is God-fearing man right here. A man that can work wonders in the community and can change the course of the community. All he asks is help with the program. And if you can touch one, you can touch 1,000. That's how I go. I'm a leader myself inside of the military, and I'm coming up in the ranks. If I could touch one soldier, that soldier could touch another soldier. And we can rid the evil and all that good stuff like that. It's just an honor to be here and speak on his behalf, and it's an honor to serve the country. Been back home only one month, but I came a great way to come speak on behalf of Mr. Josh Owens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me be the first to congratulate you and thank you for your service and thank you for the comment that you have given this body today. I'm gonna echo the same comments basically that our chairperson at the Board of, at the Parks and Rec Board, Councilman Matt Dent. We have tried our very best, I have tried my very best the last two years, to make sure we find ways to provide services for our teens. As has been stated earlier, we have programs in place, resources in place for children 6 to 10, 12, but we need something valuable and that we can measure for our teenagers. So, yes, this body need to put in place or find ways that we can put in place activities that will garner and help our young men and women, teenagers. And so, that been my push for, since I've known Mr. Josh. We want to make sure that everyone knows that Matt and I are trying our very best to figure out how we can get services for teens, teens, not.
how we can get services for teens, teens, not dismissing the other students, but we as a body really need to find a way to work through our differences on teenagers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, thank you for your, for your.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your service. Josh, thank you for what you're doing for the community.
Well, help me, if, if, if. If that young man's story doesn't tell you that Mr. Josh is, is, can put a lot of young kids on the right path, I think everybody needs to, just like Councilman Hill said, you know, you put differences aside and, and figure out a way to help him, that kind of program could change this community.
Sure.
You know, it starts small and then, like you said, don't tell them where it could go.
I know that, okay, thank you. All right, next on public comment is Alvin Jones. Alvin, you got three minutes.
That's never worked for me, but I'll take, I'll take two, if I can. Everybody else know that about it, I, I equally, uh, support boxing, sir. I used to go to the boarding girls' club in Augusta, Georgia, and boxing was big, and it taught a lot of discipline, and, of course, uh, as a housing authorities, we would try our very best to help, I, we didn't know that you were lifted for something, but we absolutely support you, so whatever you need to do. Uh, I came to ask for some money. I came to ask for thirty-three thousand dollars. And, um, I'm asking for eight thousand dollars to be reinstated back to the WCCP's, uh, original budget. I know they need it, and however it's gonna take it out, it would be great, great, greatly appreciated that y'all put it back in. This is summer camp season, right around the corner, and we have not finalized our whole entire summer program. Now, we know that the housing authority is, does it always, as it has done the last three years, it pays for any child that comes out of the housing authority. Unlike before, we required everybody to do a day-to-day roster, that made it, uh, Rodney made it real clear that it was hard to budget a staff. So, on the day, day one, uh, our kids are signed up, then we will pay for the entire five weeks. Because they don't come every day, but it's not fair to try to run a program and you may only get ten days, and you could have gotten thirty days worth of money. We have that resource, our board is good with it, and so that's where we are on that one. The, the, uh, update on the housing, because I have to leave, but I wanna, I wanna address one issue, I saw where there was a deal about, uh, Mr. Mahoney wants to address a project, uh, the Community Center. As it stands right now, we are in the transition of hiring a new executive director. Uh, we have some candidates, we just want them to accept, and then we will move forward on everything that we have. Everybody understand that it was, if the city manager was not there, then the city council will be not as effective as they are. So the same way with us, we are a nonprofit, we have a board, and we will be, um, glad to get a new ED on board, so we can get some direction. I do want, I do want to say this, and this is not to caution anyone. This is a stern kind of thing for me. If we don't find something to do with these young folk, they are going to find something for themselves. I didn't volunteer that summer, but this summer, I'm volunteering in the afternoon at the Parks and Rec. Because I know, as a recreational director, I know as a coach, and I know as a professional recreator period, that we have to put some leadership back and run in these afternoon programs. We need some money, we have, we could, we could run a myriad of programs, from flag football to soccer to basketball, we don't even care what it is. But it has to be, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, it has to be somebody there, that, that they want their respect, and two, that understand how to put those things together and run the program. If we're gonna put our part in, I ask that you all consider putting some in, to, some additional money to the Parks and Rec to run summer programs. Because you say how you're gonna do it, it takes money.
Thanks, Alvin.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Adrian Williams, public comment.
Good afternoon, how you all doing?
Good afternoon.
I'm here on behalf of Ucap, I do serve as the secretary, but I'm here on behalf of the president in his absence, um, to the mayor, I'm sorry, the administrator and the city council, um, regarding the upcoming June 10th holiday. Um, we the Ucap, I'm reading from his letter today. Uh, we the Uca- Ucap, UCAAP, the United Community Awareness Action Program, would like to request your participation and support to help us make this event a wonderful success. We are asking for the use of the downtown square for the event and a donation of twenty-five hundred dollars from the city council. Uh, the event is scheduled for June the nineteenth, which we will have speakers, musicians, vendors participating, along with a history of what took place in Washington after the emancipation proclamation and its relation to the June 10th by our local, um, historian, Robert M. Willingham. It is our hope to work with the city and local citizens of Washington to make this an annual event. We look forward to your support in this endeavor, uh, thank you in advance for your help, and it's signed, Henry Evercruel, the president of Ucap. So I'm just reading this from him, so you all can let us know what, and I have also contacted, um, Janet Parker, and we have the information to go ahead and fill out for everything, so I told her I was gonna come this afternoon to speak on it behalf of him, and I appreciate that, okay?
Thank you, Adrian.
One question, Mr. Mayor.
What's this gonna say, a question?
One question.
Wasn't this held last year at the history, uh, History Center?
Yes, in case, uh, from what I understand from Mr. Prue, that they weren't gonna take part in it this year. So, I'm not for sure, I don't know, that's what he told me. So, they were looking for an organization to actually take forth, so he brought it before our board, and we agreed to go forth with it.
Has Stephanie, Stephanie come in on that, have y'all asked Stephanie about that?
I'm quite sure he talked to her, I'm not for sure.
I'll find out, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You have him handbraced down there, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. One question, uh, what are you specifically asking the, uh, this body to do?
Well, he's.
Because I know that we're at the museum doing some things also, so what are you asking specifically for this body?
Well, I, from my understanding, he was asking the, the city council to, uh, to help support us in this because of the bands and the different things that has to be bought before the, you know, during the June nineteen, June nineteenth. And that's basically all, the twenty-five hundred dollars will take care of some of that, and the food and.
So you're asking for twenty-five hundred?
Right, that's what, right.
I just wanted to know some specifics.
Right, and so to answer to your question, Mayor, I'm going on what the president asked me to do, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I see in terms of, uh, public setup, I saw Kenny Benson about that boxing program, we already had, Kenny's already spoken, so I think, I think, I think there, any, any other public comment here tonight? All right, let's move on then. Thank you, folks, for your comment, for your interest in, in the, in the city business. All right, uh, next item are mayor's topics. Uh, first are my recommendation, uh, to, to appoint us to the Family Connections Board, and I'm appointing Councilman Cullors, uh, and, uh, Ms. Lee Hearn, uh, to be, uh, city representatives on the Family Connections Board. I hope that'll suit, that's, that's what I recommended to the council here tonight.
I know Councilman Cullors, who is Ms. Hearn? I don't know who that person is.
Ms. Hearn is a longtime teacher here in Wilkes County, um, works great for the kids, has a lot of interest in this.
Can you forward me just a little snippet of a bio or some of that nature?
I'll have to pull it out together, if I can get with her on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I, quite honestly, I don't know that, uh, we helped get council approval for this, I think I can just make this appointment.
You do, you do.
Yeah, and, so, we do have to get council approval.
It's your motion.
Okay, I would like a motion to approve those, uh, those two appointments, Councilman Cullors and, and Lee Hearn, yes?
I make a motion that, uh, these two be approved, I would like, still like the information on Ms. Hearn.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yes, sir.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, any further discussion?
Question.
Yes, Councilman.
I just wanna make a, I just wanna make a note that there be, I think we have three schoolteachers that need to be placed on this board. I have a little concern that I have about who's being appointed, I mean, she's a schoolteacher, you got the principal that's been over there, and I think there's one more person. But this, this board has been operating out of practice for a while, so they couldn't, the money's gonna make it work.
Okay.
How long is the, Mr. Mayor, how long is the appointment, is it for a year, two years?
You know, I don't know, uh, I, I'll have to check, um, maybe just to you, okay?
Do we need to make that a motion, or do we need to?
Mr. Mayor, may I have a comment on that? Uh, just in, as a refresher, at council's direction, we had, had asked that they add two members to their board that the city would appoint, and I, my understanding is that those would be annual appointments. And is that, is that what you recall too, a couple of months, I know we've talked, we've, we've met, talked a little bit.
So, um, Detroit, yes, sir. Okay, I like that.
All right, uh, motion made, second, all in favor of these appointments, please raise your hand.
Annual, yes, and, these are.
Annual appointments, yes. The motion passes. Any opposed? All right, show none opposed. All right, I've handed out to you, uh, appointments to initial screening panels for ethics complaints. We've had two ethics complaints, one of which is against four councilmen, uh, one of which is, uh, Councilman Anderson against Councilman Cullors. We've got five different ethics, uh, matters we gotta deal with, uh, we got, we have to get them scheduled. Our procedure, uh, on our ethics code is that initially there's a, uh, of course, the ethics complaint is filed. The mayor then appoints, uh, three members of city council, who with the city attorney comprise the investigative committee. So I've got to, I gotta appoint three members of city council as an investigative committee. The committee determines whether the ethics complaints, uh, against the official set forth sufficient facts to warrant a hearing. And, uh, assuming they do, our charter, uh, the, the problem here is that our charter, our city charter doesn't, makes no provision for multiple defendants or named, uh, ethics defendants in one ethics complaint. And the complication here is that one ethics complaint is filed against four city councilmen. Uh, because the effect of that means that the three councilmen not named would comprise both the screening or investigative committee, but then they'd also have to comprise the judge or the judging committee. And it, it, uh, it, it just, it makes for a conflict of interest there, and frankly, would violate due process under the law. What I've done is, uh, separate out these, uh, these, uh, complaints into five different, uh, screening panels to address each, uh, each defendant or person named in a separate ethics complaint. And that's what I have handed out to the councilman here tonight, is a, um, the screening panels and the names of, the names of each ethics complaint, and then the individuals appointed to that screening panel. So that's what, that's what I've handed out here tonight.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Number one, I think that's buried.
Yes, sir.
If the mayor's part of that complaint, how is he gonna pick Booker on the.
If you look at the last thing on your list, Mr. Councilman, Booker versus DeGoli, he has not appointed those three, the mayor pro temp, which I believe is Councilman Mahoney. We'll have to appoint those three members.
I got, I have a question as well. Uh, I'll, I'll explain that, Councilman. Once again, this, this appointment, as he said, due process is biased. So, I, if it's against the mayor, he don't have judgment of what's against the, for them, so how is he gonna appoint someone? And it's against all four of them, that's not due process, due process, you, you get off, uh, the ma- the ma- pro temp will be doing all this, not him.
So, so, Councilman, the problem is, under your ordinances, you have to have three people on a panel to hear the initial complaint and decide if you move it to a full council meeting.
I agree.
You've seen that before.
Mm-hmm.
And so, the problem is, if you go by your logic and disqualify the four people on council that are named and treated all as one, rather than treating it as four separate complaints, you have disqualified a quorum of the council and you cannot carry out the process. You have to have at least four of you to make a quorum to hear the complaint if it's passed over by the committee. So if you take them all separately as single complaints and do them that way, you have a quorum that can hear the final resolution. Because only one person would be qualified, disqualified from each of those groups. So if you don't do it this way, you can't carry out the process under your ordinances.
Question, once again, I hear what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Why can't the mayor pro temp?
So the mayor pro temp has to appoint the members of the panel as they apply to hearing the complaint against the mayor.
And why can't you apply, because all of them is about the same thing? Y'all get to the.
So here's my point, if you disqualify the mayor, Councilman Edard, Councilman Wagner, and Councilman Anderson, you now count the four people. And it takes four of y'all, if you disqualify them by doing it that way, it takes four of y'all to sit here and hear the final complaint. You no longer have a quorum. So the way your ethics panel is set up, if you don't treat these as individual complaints, you never have a quorum to hear the final.
I thought it consisted of the administrator.
The only time the administrator's involved is when it's against an employee.
Please, when you got the complaint against the mayor, he should have handed that complaint to the administrator.
No, the complaint against the mayor goes to the mayor pro temp, and then the mayor pro temp has to appoint three members on the initial panel.
And this could go on, basically, Councilman Mahoney, you got the, they give you a complaint against the mayor, haven't received no complaints. So, once again, this is, if you wanna do it the correct way, this should have been done way before now, so why hasn't?
Well, I won't give you the advice to say there can't be a complaint against the mayor because it wasn't given to the mayor pro temp, because I know everybody has had access to it. My suggestion would be for the mayor pro temp to make his three appointments, he doesn't have to do it tonight, he can do it, he can think about it.
So what, what's timeframe for all this, how many, how many days do they have?
So, once, once, once the, the appointments are made to the panel, the investigative committee of three has sixty days to make a full recommendation to the whole council.
So, that's my point again, uh, has it been sixty days since the complaint against me?
The sixty days doesn't run until the three-person investigative panel is appointed, that's when the sixty days start.
So if they never meet, so if they ever never meet, then the days don't start, I, I, I.
Well, they, they can't meet until they're appointed.
Then, then appointed.
So I appointed tonight.
No, 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 the point, you appointed Mason Young, um, Dillon and Wagner for the complaint that this young man is beside, that did sixty days ago. Uh, how you gonna still have?
I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, yeah. That's in January, this is what?
I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know the mayor made appointments.
No, he did not. I didn't make appointments, they were.
Yes, he did.
Now, hold on a second, they, they, the complaint Anderson versus Cullors were filed February third. Booker versus DeGoli, Anderson, Denard, and Wagner was filed February ninth.
In January.
I got the dates they were filed, got it right here.
But the clock doesn't run when they're filed, that sixty, the clock you referred to runs when a three-person panel is appointed to hear it. They have sixty days to investigate, that's the time limit in your.
Well, see, once again, all you're showing is public is biased, so it doesn't matter. Go ahead and point who what you want and do what you need, it's gonna come out the same way, go for it.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Councilman.
I wanna go ahead.
So, I did receive an email from America DeGoli about the, um, ethics complaint that was filed in the one filed with, um, Anderson versus Cullors. However, I think the mayor is implicated in that ethics complaint as well because of a recording that was shared, the recording was hears. So, once again, I don't, I, I asked the mayor to reduce himself from the ethics complaint because he could be called as a witness or the evidence that he actually supplied, uh, regarding the ethics complaint. The other issue is, the mayor's also a part of the other ethics complaint that was filed by Booker. And Booker filed the ethics complaint, she filed it all at once, those were not separated. So, one is, how, how do we separate an ethics complaint when it wasn't filed separately, that's meaning that we, we doing an ethics complaint?
And then the. I'm sorry.
And the other part of it is, how much is it gonna cost to come down and have hearings on four ethics complaints? These ethics complaints is built by the city attorney. These ethics complaints bill by the city attorney, within two thousand dollars plus for each ethics complaint. The other issue is the, the basis of the complaint. And each one of them, I feel, because they implement the mayor in some capacity, that he should reprove himself. Now, if he choose not to reprove himself and set the standard or set the way how these boards are gonna be here, you may be looking at another case.
So, the problem is, if the mayor, if everybody in his name recuses himself, and that will be four of y'all, you no longer have four to make a quorum to finalize the process. So if you don't treat them separately, you'll never have a quorum to hear it out. That's the way your ordinances were written. So, the mayor does recuse himself, and did for the complaint as it stands against him, and it's your responsibility, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, to appoint three councilmembers to be the initial investigative panel, if you so choose.
So, two things. One, my recommendation would be, let the remaining councilmembers, who is not a part of the ethics complaint, whether that number is two or three, hear the ethics complaint and go forward. Or, this body, appoint somebody else to sit on this board.
If you had a line in your ordinances which read, and if the complaint is against a majority of the council, the remaining councilmembers shall serve as the final decision-making body, that would be how it would work. But as it says now, you have to have a council meeting to do that, and you can't have a council meeting without a quorum. So if you don't treat them as separate, you never will be able to complete the process.
You're not preaching to the choir, because I've made motions plenty of times, and your office have drew up the documents, whether we have attorneys, a group of attorneys deal the ethics complaint, or citizens get the ethics complaint. Unfortunately, it's sad to wait and reason why I have to hear it, because of the gender topics of citizens being removed from it. But I can't sit here and say that we listen to four ethics complaints, and how we gonna hear them is based on a member of whom the ethics complaint was filed on. I think the official position would be, if, appoint somebody other than somebody that's here at this board, or hire a attorneys group to investigate this ethics complaint against the mayor and the other councilmembers, if we ain't gonna have them.
This, this council has the power to change their ordinances to effectuate what you just said, but it would take y'all changing your ordinances. Right now, you have to follow your ordinances as they are, and this is the only way to do it and still have a quorum.
Mr. Mayor, one other question. Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman Mahoney, I was gonna allude to that, you have several meetings, talked about councilmembers investigating or coming to a conclusion against each other. And so I think we definitely need to have more discussions at later time on this matter to make sure we're taking care of the business of Washington. Council, my question to you is, why do we need to separate these complaints? Because it was filed together. Do, why do we need to separate?
Let me, let me explain it once again and ask it this way. Let's say a complaint is filed against all seven of you.
Right.
Who will hear the complaint? The, the process will not work the way your ordinances are written unless you do it as separate complaints. Because the complaint was filed against four of you, it takes four of you to hear the final matter and reach a conclusion. And if you treat them as one complaint, four of you are disqualified, you don't have a quorum, you can't have a meeting, you never can make a final ruling on the ethics complaint.
A couple of years ago, Councilman Coles had a complaint filed against him, and-
And Mahoney, at the same time.
Yes, at the same time. And we carried those two. Now, I understand the fact that that was two versus four.
That's correct.
But however, we really need to understand, because as Councilman Mahoney said earlier, we're talking about spending more money. And I'm not saying that the city do not have the money to spend, but why shouldn't we spend more money? Because we will not separate these complaints. I don't know if the answer is, they need to be refiled, one, two, three, four? Or do we need to separate them so that the city, so that the city council can have-
By, by, by the mayor's appointment, council, he has separated. And now you can have a quorum and move ahead with the process. If he did not do it that way, you would not have a quorum at the end of the process to, to finalize it.
And, good point, case upon again, as Councilman Mahoney said, we're gonna spend more money as a city in separating these-
So as you recall, as far as spending money, when you, as the mayor pro temp chaired the matter, when the mayor filed his complaint against Councilman Mahoney and Councilman Coles, the three of you on, on the panel, you appointed yourself, I believe, and two other councilmembers, y'all never met. You just talked amongst yourselves separately and through me, and you never even had a meeting. You just pass it on to the full council, which was four of y'all left, you had a quorum to do it, and you presided.
Correct.
So that took very little time. If the investigative panel chooses to meet, it does take more time. If you choose not to meet, it doesn't. The ordinances don't say that you have to meet in that investigative part. You each can make your own determination, who the three are, and if two of you decide to move ahead, it moves ahead. If only one of you does, it ends right there, it's dismissed. So it can take longer, but it doesn't have to take longer, it really is up to y'all through the process. And also, all, all of these could be heard on the same day, on the same time, if, if it all get passed along to the full council. You could all hear them on the same day at the same time, one of you or whichever one of you would have to remove yourself, just like they did when you chaired the meeting here. So it can, it doesn't have to happen at seven different meetings, it can happen all in one night, and you just rearrange the, the judges and title.
My, my last question, Barry, is-
Yes, sir.
Since the mayor and the four councilmen, it's, it's still gonna goes to the ma pro temp, it's likely to be not the mayor himself. Because on this panel, you got two white, one black, two white, one black. And then one of you got two blacks and one white. You can't do that. He, he, it's against the four of them, the ma pro temp should select whoever they want to put on that council, not him.
So, 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 Councilman, with, with the, with the complaint as it stands against him, as you see on the-
No, it's against all four of them at the same time.
As you see on that last line, Booker versus DeGolea, he did not appoint, he left the appointments up to the mayor pro temp, Councilman Mahoney, to appoint.
Yeah, you know, I hear what you're saying, but the point is, it's against the four of them at the same time. The ma should, ma pro temp should take over and let him select from the, the group of them to do what he's doing now.
So if you disqualify people by your logic-
I'm not disqualifying.
But if, yes, you are, you're saying the mayor can't make the form because the complaint was against him. And he didn't, as it goes to him, he left that to the mayor pro temp. But if everybody is disqualified because they're named, you will not have a quorum to, to have a final resolution.
No, that ain't what I'm saying. If it's against the four of them by the same day, let them finish.
Even though you're not, even though you're not saying that, that is the problem, that says-
Yeah, once again, as a lawyer, you, you're trying to go for one side. Why wouldn't he conclude something like the ma pro temp take care of the whole situation?
He did, Mayor, Councilman Mahoney appoints the three councilmembers as it goes against him.
Go ahead. Let me, let me just say this, my question is, two things. One of them is, is it legal for us to separate a ethics complaint when it, I don't care if it was filed against six councilmembers, but can we separate an ethics complaint that's filed and who is named?
Not only, not only is it legal, but if you didn't, you would not have a process. The process would be void.
Okay, well-
So what you try to do is always interpret your ordinances in such a way that your processes can move forward.
Okay, well, and the one with Anderson versus Coles, the mayor, did you supply audio of something that you heard in the ethics complaint?
I, I recorded that conversation, yes, sir.
Did you, did you share that? Who, who did you share that with?
Well, I gave it to Councilman Anderson.
Okay, so how can the mayor appoint a committee when he's a part of the investigation?
Just, just like you as a witness, will, even though you were at the council meeting that Miss Booker's complaint is about, and you are a witness to what happened, you still are required to sit on this council and vote yea or nay on the final resolution. Just because the mayor was a witness to what happened, doesn't disqualify him, or would disqualify you and everybody else.
Listen, don't listen, your logic, how you wanna do it, or how you recommending legal advice to these council about doing it, you might as well let everybody around this table go on the ethics complaint.
Tell me another way to do it, Councilman.
Well, I'm just saying, and I, and I, and I, our ethics complaint, our ethics ordinance is toned there as to whether or not we can use the remaining three councilmembers. It don't say, it don't say we can or we can't.
It says you have to have a meeting and conclude it, and without a quorum, you can't have a meeting.
If, if, if you don't have a quorum based off the ones who are indicted in the ethics complaint, you have to use what's left.
And, Councilman, you can change your ordinances to say that, but right now, they don't say that.
I think the safety says a ten thousand dollars, I think that we need to let an outside group hear this ethics complaint.
Councilman, as I have done before, we will draw up for you that order change.
You already have that document, so, don't give us no more for that document.
We will bring it to the council if you want to make a motion. I, we have drawn that up before, we'll do it again, but right now, that's not what's written down in your ordinances.
Okay, well, I tabled this ruling, I, I, I motioned that we tabled this ruling till you can give those documents to this body, and we can seek out a-
So, so, Council, let me, let me explain that to you. If they change the speed limit, for example, on that road out there-
Don't do that, Barry, this is talking about-
I will explain to you by analogy, and I'm gonna tell you. If they change that speed limit out there to thirty-five from forty-five, they can't arrest you for speeding, for going, for going over the speed limit yesterday. It's only prospective going forward. If you change your ethics ordinances on how you're gonna hear cases, it will be prospective going forward, not in looking back in reverse. You can't, you can't, you can't have it retroactive, it has to be going forward, so it's not going to change the complaints before you, it's only gonna change how you would handle it.
No, we, no, 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 don't do that, because we can do what we want to do, we can tell everybody, we can say what we want to do. Don't, don't, don't say that it can't rule on past ethics.
Councilman, all I can do is give you my advice, y'all can vote to overrule me or the mayor anytime you want to.
The last advice that we got, count to three. Three people voting.
Councilman Mahoney, I do need to know from you, are you going to account, appoint the three councilmembers to hear the mayor to go?
Well, I would have been appointed, if you would have tried my phone call, I called twice.
Well, first of all, I didn't know, and I apologize if I missed your call. You don't have to tell me tonight, but I do need to know.
Well, you got it.
Let, let me just say that in these appointments, every councilmember, both District One and District Two, have been appointed the equal number of times, and I've made as a balance as I could in terms of who will be hearing what complaints against what councilmembers. Trying to make as fair as possible based upon the makeup of the council, that's all we can do. All right, let's, let's move on, Ken. Uh, let's see, next we're going on to council discussion topics. And Councilman Anderson, I believe you're the first one up on council, councilman discussion topics.
This is a, this is an issue that's certainly at the forefront of, of everybody's attention, at least maybe not explained or expressed this way. One, the, 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 I guess, the environment of crime and the need for law enforcement in our communities. Obviously, we need to do everything we could possibly do as a legal body to provide the, the resources and the capabilities to our sheriff's department, which are, are responsible for keeping the peace, crime prevention, crime investigation, the whole gamut of all police activity, or law enforcement activity. And so the fact that whatever the decision was made, or whatever the logic was, was made two or three years ago, not to fully fund what we had committed, we, the city council had committed three or four years ago to, to fund the county sheriff's department, meaning allocating funds to the county so they can then allocate them to the sheriff's department, so he can effectively do his duty. And that is to provide the best law enforcement capability we possibly can. And I think we need to start the discussion, all this is, is a discussion topic, to reinitiate with the city, with the, with the county, to fund them to the degree that is appropriate. And there again, I'll defer to the, to the experts and to you guys that were here two to three years ago. But the budget line is there, we have not, we have not committed and or obligated that, those funds to the county. And so I, I think that's, at the time, evidently, the decision was made and it was logical. I'm saying we now need to relook at it, because my perspective of it is, and I think if I'm reading the input from constituents of the city, both, both districts, it's certainly not a District One versus District Two, it's a city of Washington issue, is that the need is there for us to do everything we possibly can to support the county and to ensure that the sheriff's department has every tool and asset that they can, they can possibly, possibly apply towards law enforcement.
Let me, let me just say this, Councilman Anderson, and I appreciate you bringing this up. I, I too have had some conversations with the county commission chairman, Chairman Moore, and I've said, Mark, we're ready to pay some money to help the sheriff's department. You can just tell us, you know, give us some feedback from the sheriff as to, as to how they might use it. Just give us some idea of where the money can go, how it might be used. And it's silence, not getting any feedback. And it's, I'm frustrated, because I, I do feel that the city should be kicking in some to help the sheriff's department, but at the same time, I think it's reasonable that the city have some feedback from the sheriff's department how it might be used, where it might be used. But not, it's just a breakdown of communication here.
Mayor, let me, let me, let me just say this. Our sheriff says that for the type of service that we want him to commit to, we need to bring back our police department. That's what our sheriff said, we shake hands over that, though. What, what you giving for?
Mr. Mayor, I've had discussions with the sheriff recently, just one-on-one, he does not say that. If he said that in the past, I don't know about it, that's not what he's saying now. And I'll be glad to go out there with you to him, to sit down and ask him again. That's not certainly what he told me his position was.
Well, the mayor, hold on a minute, Mayor, the mayor just said he's trying to have that conversation, so-
With the county commission chairman.
With the county commission chairman, so if you, you're bringing this up, you said you, you said you've had a meeting with the sheriff, what does the sheriff mean?
I had a conversation with the sheriff, if you want to add to, me to quote what he said, which I don't think is, is pertinent right now, but you brought it up, that he's saying that we ought to have a city police department? That's not what he-
Well, you just said that you met with the sheriff, what is his recommendation?
Had we funded him to what we agreed to and allow him to do his job. He did not say we should start a new city police department, did not-
Okay, well, city magistrate, you have been here ever since before Councilman Anderson had been here. How many meetings, how many times have we reached out to our sheriff about the type of policing that? We was, we was wanting two officers on day and two officers on night to be committed to the city limits of city of Washington to do patrol. And with that conversation that we had with sheriff, what was the outcome of that?
We've probably, your first question was how many times, I probably have lost count, but I'd say ten, twelve times back and forth, one-on-one, two, three, ten in the room. We've met just with the sheriff, we've met with the sheriff, Deputy Turner, we've met with the sheriff, Deputy Turner, representatives of the county commission. And I think as often happens in life, I, I believe, both of you are, you're both touching on very important factual parts of that. The sheriff hated to see us withdraw the funds, but when we offered it back, and we have, you remember, two years in a row, we've gone back to them with a proposal to fund officers. And the communication that we received came from the board of commissioners, not from the sheriff. From the board of commissioners, it said, maybe you should form your own police department. So I, I think both of you are actually saying correct information here. Then one is, I think the sheriff would still welcome the help, but it won't be his call, it would really be the board of commissioners to decide whether they do or don't want our, our support. And I don't know if that answers your question.
The sheriff is an elective, is an elective officer, just like officers are. So, and his budget is outside of the county. He has his own discrepancy on how he, he runs his, his wheelhouse over there at Sheriff's Department. My question is, when we talked about the officers, what we was asking, what did the sheriff tell us then? That he would, if I recall the conversation went along the lines of, yeah, he wants the money, yeah, he would be, he would allocate some patrol, but he couldn't say that his officers would stay inside the city limits.
Yeah, I think, I think the point you're making had to do with, and if, I'm, I'm working a bit from recall here. Tell me if you remember it this way too. I think it said, they operate with usually four deputies total on patrol on any given time. Two of them tend to stay inside the city, two tend to stay outside the city. And our proposal was, well, what if we brought the funding that would, would add one more or maybe two more inside the city? I think to your point, that's where the breakdown in agreement was occurring was if we, if we funded one more, one more at night, one in the day, 24 hours a day, does that mean there would always be three inside the city? And that's where the sheriff was saying, well, I can't guarantee that because I may need to send it where I sent it. And so I think that's what you were remembering, that we were trying to quantify this amount of money. Are we really turning four officers into five or six? And we couldn't, we couldn't get a definitive answer on that. Is that kind of what you remembered?
A little bit. Um, so let's, let's come from an S D S perspective, service to delivery perspective. How much tax money do you share collecting from citizens in the City of Washington?
Who, buddy?
Councilman Wack.
It's over a million dollars. It's, I think about 1.3 million.
I think it's just under 1.4.
So with giving any more money to, to sheriff, and that 1.2 million dollars is collected from the citizens inside just the city that is of Washington. It's almost like we'd be, and we pay both city and county taxes. So you take your money from the citizen that's already paying for law enforcement, and then we're paying county taxes. There's also going into the general fund instead of being separated the way G M A said it should because you see where these dollars are going, you know? You know, that's a hard, that's, that's a hard fight because my citizens are saying they'd be in double tax for the same service. It shouldn't be right.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Mahoney that we are being double taxed, but the bottom line is, they want our money, but they don't want to do what we want to do. They won't, they don't want us to have any involvement in where we put the police. It's their job. You give us the money, we will do what we want to do.
Can I, can I add a comment on that, Mr. Mayor? Please. You're, you're right, Councilman Mahoney. I probably have sat in as many or more meetings than anybody else in the room on this. And here's how I read it. I, I think, I think I beg to differ just a little bit, Councilman Wack. I think that if we were to ask, for example, a patrol to be just in the, uh, Southwest District, if we were to say, well, we'll give you extra money if it was an extra patrol just in that district, I think our sheriff would agree with it. But I think back to your point, that's where I see this whole thing broke down is, in my simple math, if what we already paid, your point is valid. What we already paid right now in taxes that roll up into the county for the sheriff's office. If we were to say, well, what we already paid gets us what we get right now, and we, the city say, okay, we want to sweeten the pot. We want to come with more money for a patrol in the target area. And the target area could be whatever that's, whatever is decided. I believe the sheriff would say, I'd absolutely put a dedicated patrol in that area. I think the part where, to your point, where it gets convoluted is, yeah, but then what happens to the other two patrols that we just said were in town? Are they gonna stay in town or are they gonna be outside the city limits a lot? And that's where, I guess, the sheriff's gonna say, he's got, he's got to do what he's, feels he's got to do as the sheriff. And I don't think we can quite define it that tightly. We might, we might, on any given day, have two or three in the city. And I think they probably, you know, we even talked at one time, would you be willing to mark one of the vehicles like, you know, like you see a school resource, couldn't it be a city resource vehicle? And he, he was willing to do that. But I think where we're all finding the differences here is, even if they took our money and, and would receive it, is that still two patrols inside the city or is that now a third? And I think that's what y'all would just have to negotiate through. But I think our sheriff is open to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think we're all missing the point. I mean, we having shootings in our streets and we don't want to help support the sheriff's department with the lack of a police department. The sheriff was elected official, like you say, he's got one job, uphold state law. The sheriff's department's right there on the city lines. 75% of the crime calls are in the city limits. How, by not funding, which was a mistake, this board voted down the funding, uh, the sheriff's department was a huge mistake. I voted against it. I think it's a huge mistake again for us to keep going on and on, trying to specify in some kind of contract telling the sheriff what he has to do. It's not a, it's not a rent-a-car, it's the sheriff's department. By us adding money, adding our part as a city government, it's gonna beef up our sheriff's department. I mean, and, and at this point in time, I mean, I don't think there's a citizen out there who'd disagree with that.
Well, the question, the, the question answered about the sheriff's department, Councilman Wack, see, Mr. just told you. Can we earmark those officers to be in the city limits? But it, it, and I get it, it shouldn't be going on. But let's talk about, we've been talking about this for the last three, five years. We were talking about bringing back the police department. But I guess just the shooting that just happened, happens on the backside of Robert Toons, now y'all started getting saved phone calls immediately.
I voted against defunding. You voted to defund the sheriff's department.
Who voted to defund?
You voted to defund the sheriff's department in October of 2020.
I voted to defund.
There was two councilmen that voted against it, me and Mr. Coles. Me and him voted against it. Everybody else voted to stop funding the sheriff's department.
Well, you shared it. Well, my thing was just right. If sheriff comes to tell us that the officers that we're gonna pay for are not gonna be in the city limits, I think I did a good thing for not voting for it.
He can't do that. If there's something, if there's a call out there, he can't say that he's not gonna send that officer. He can't do that. He has, he has a responsibility in the entire county. What we're doing is, instead of looking at it as a contract and what we're buying and what we're getting, we're partnershiping with the sheriff's department in lieu of not having a city police.
That's partnership on the fire department going to calls out there in the county.
Now, we have another discussion, but that's not what we're talking about.
That's another discussion, but it's getting to what money.
Police and fires, two different things.
Oh, but it's different, okay. $500,000, we got half the money we have in the fire department. We could probably bring back our own police departments.
We have, we already, we've done a study on that. It's about two million.
Let, let me interrupt here. I, I think it would be worthwhile to, as Councilman Anderson has suggested here, that we reinitiate conversations with the sheriff. Matt, you know the sheriff well. Andy, I think you know the sheriff well. Maybe the two of you can sit down with him. It, it's not unreasonable to say sheriff.
I think it's my jurisdiction to want it to be in that meeting.
Okay. All right, and you want to go, and you want to go?
I'd love to.
Okay, all right.
What if I see that, what if I see that magistrate?
Well, how big a group we gotta have here? You know, you know what I mean?
Well, I see that magistrate, he's one who runs up, he's one who runs the city. You know, and a conversation comes up about money, he'll be the best one that can make an answer to it.
I think in this case, I really would like to be a part of that because I do feel like there's still, uh, there is still a doable plan somewhere in here. It won't be easy, but I think we get the right people at the table, maybe we can make this happen.
I'd like to make one more point for full disclosure. They made a contract with the city in 2014, and it's, it's right about the same amount of money. Now, now we're what, nine years later? They're not asking for any more money. They're just acting partnership, uh, you know, with the same amount of money that we have given nine years ago? I mean, in most worlds, you're not gonna have a service contract where it, it doesn't increase in amount. I mean, it'd be one thing if they came and wanted a million dollars, but that's not, I think we just, I think we all need to come together for, for the sake of the citizens of Washington and public safety.
Right.
I mean, if we're talking about spending money any other direction, I, I think that's a huge mistake.
All right, let's, let's do this. I'd like Councilman Denard, Councilman Mahoney, and our seat administrator to sit down with sheriff one other. Is that gonna be too many? Anderson, you want, and you want to join in that as well?
I thought, I thought I heard another name. I didn't know.
Well, we glad to.
Well, that'd be four, but we're gonna, you're gonna, you've got a strong over the sheriff here. I don't think that's what he'll, how he'll view it. Anyway, could, can you folks plan to get with the sheriff in the next week or two? And just see, surely the guy would find a way here. I mean, here we're offering the county, the sheriff's department, $300,000, $400,000. And surely the guy, they, they're not gonna turn that down. All they gotta do is say, all right, well, yeah, we'll be happy to take it and, and we'll do this. I don't think that's unreasonable to ask that. Anyway, so that, I think that's, that step we can take on.
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, and some of the council members who are here remember this, when you do give that money to the sheriff, it has to be a contract approved by the County Commission too.
Okay.
They, they have to be, they have to play a role in it.
Okay, good.
But it's just an approval of the agreement.
Well, question on that, Barry. It's already a line in the budget, is it not?
From the city budget?
Yeah.
We have public safety money that can be used for things like to flock cameras, but that would be the line item and any money would be put in and paid out of, but that's not a contract with the county.
Right, it's not a contract. But then I'm a little confused from four years ago, when George wasn't here, the line in, in the agreement was to fund, it was to fund the county, money to the county to support law enforcement to the tenure of about 600,000.
And the county put us 100,000 for fires, so you got a net, net of about 500K to the sheriff.
Okay, but it was still lines in the budget, not a contract.
Yes, you still gotta have a contract.
There was a separate contract.
It was in the agreement.
And it was, the law said it has to be approved by three parties, the council, the commission, sheriff, all three have to sign off on it.
And, but we must have had the ability at that point in time to just stop paying it because that's what we did, as Matt was talking about.
Contract was up until July, and then, uh, I think we started paying half, and then by October, it was, uh, passed by this board to stop all payment because the contract had been resigned.
So, so, so the first time that I remember contention, if you want to call it, I think only Councilman Coles and Mahoney would have been there then, is the city police chief used to come give a monthly report to the council about what occurred and how many arrests and so forth and so on. And when the request was made for that information, it wasn't forthcoming in the same fashion. And that's the beginning of the conversation when it started to go downhill. And that's, and I don't know exactly based on that, but that's the best of my memory.
Well, look, I'd like to three of you to, to get with the sheriff and see what y'all, see if you work out something.
One more question, Barry. Would that, would that affect our S D S agreement?
So, um, the sheriff is actually in the law outside of the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement. That law was passed in 2003. Um, in just briefly history, sheriffs and police chiefs were required to talk about who's gonna patrol this road. And whole idea of Service Delivery Strategy is you don't have two water lines running down the same road, one county, one city. Idea was the same way with police. But the sheriffs didn't like that, and they got the law changed, so they're exempt from the Service Delivery Strategy. But there's a separate law outside of that that says it has to be an agreement in the contract to do it. And that's what I'll be representing.
All right, we've been going, uh, since 6:30. Can we take maybe a five-minute break and then pick it up from there? Councilman Coles, you're the next one on the agenda, I think.
Take mine's off.
You wanna go on?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we get off the subject, I don't think we need to put all of eggs in one basket. I think we still should look at other alternatives. And it may be city police department. I'm, I'm not, I'm not bought out that the sheriff's gonna buy. I've been in too many meetings with him. He told me too many times that I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do. You give me 500,000 more, I'm gonna still do what I'm doing. You're not getting anything more. I, I can't give somebody 500,000 if they're not gonna give me more.
So, that's not, that's not entirely accurate because we sat in a meeting, Mr. Coles, Jerry, the mayor, and the sheriff, we all sat in Mr. Bill's office, had a meeting with the sheriff. And everybody was going back and forth on this and that, what they want, what they gonna pay. And I asked the sheriff, Mark Moore, I said, uh, when y'all contracted with the City of Washington to take over the police, uh, force, I said, how many more officers did you hire? You hired eight more officers. That's what we got. I, I don't understand what we're missing here. You hired eight more officers, and at some point, they were up to 10. And now they're having to take part-time, let people off, all this stuff. So they're chipping back down because their budget got cut due to the lack of our contract. So that's what we got. We got more officers on the street. I mean, that's, you know, we, I don't know how else to explain that. I mean, that's, 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 that's our take off a contract with sheriff's department.
All right, um, let me get the sense of the council here. It's, it's quarter of eight. We've been going on hour 45 minutes, uh, a little, a little more than that, I'm gonna say. Y'all want to take a break for a few minutes or keep on plugging along?
I have spoken. Hell, buddy.
No break? I mean, that's, that's what I'll do. Okay, we'll keep on plugging. Uh, Councilman Coles, you want to withdraw your, your matter, okay? All right, Councilman Mahoney, update on housing authority development project?
Yes, sir. So, um, Mayor Council, uh, three years ago, there was a development that needed Councilman Coles working with the housing authority. And the housing authority managed it at the time with Stucky. Um, we developed the, fixing the roofs, fixing the, um, did some repainting of the apartments, clearing out mold, um, trying to make the apartments more energy efficient, uh, with new units, new electrical panels as well. Um, and there was a headquarters that was also was gonna be built that would have a meeting room, an exercise room. I want to say it had a, um, a room for, um, if a doctor came over to, um, I guess, maybe give shots or, rest this, this was over there, as well as a lunch room. And I went to the, um, the housing authority board meeting two months ago, and, you know, relayed with the board about, I'd love to see redevelopment happen, not only just on Washington Heights, but also on Harper Street and, uh, School Street. And I was told then that, um, they was, uh, working on it. I guess my question is now is that from this body, we would like to know from the housing authority, is this project, is still on? It's been a three-year project. The last time we met with Mr. Stucky, all the paperwork and documents had been signed, had been done, just had not been approved by the board. I think having apartments that's over 50 years old, I think is long overdue for those apartments to be redeveloped. So I guess what we would be asking is, go back to housing authority board, and it's, I know they can get transitional power in the, um, executive director, but soon after the executive director, I guess, is placed, how much more will we have to wait on seeing redevelopment happen over in housing authority?
Can we get that some quick?
May I speak to that? Um, so Washington Heights is being managed by a Stucky management. Um, we don't have the say-so over there to do that. So as far as those, uh, questions, it, it would have to go to Mr. Stucky as, as of right now. And that's, that's all we know.
Yeah, y'all haven't had any meetings with Mr. Stucky about the redevelopment yet? No conversation?
Not, not as of recent, no.
Do you know when the last conversation was?
It was last year sometime. So we don't know what he, when he plans to move forward just yet.
Oh, y'all, y'all ready to move forward with it?
We don't know what he plans to do.
Okay. Well, we'll call Mr. Stucky. Make sure you do that.
Is that it? Say that, no special talk, say that, yeah?
I have also the, um, update on the E O A program. And, and the E O A program is actually the energy assistance. And you learn a lot by being up at the city hall, how city hall works and, you know, who's doing what and what type of money is actually coming in. Well, after COVID, the E O A program was going back to a person, um, interview. That means that the citizens of Washington will have to drive to Augusta for their appointment in order to get the energy assistance. And, you know, uh, Fly, Jerry did his job. I sent out a flyer reminding and letting everybody know what was going on. And, you know, uh, fly, Jerry did his job. I sent out a flyer reminding and letting everybody know what was going on. But in that conversation with the, um, the ladies in the office, um, about a lot of elderly people with this money is earmarked to first. I have a hard time uploading the application, definitely a hard time getting to Augusta. So that sparked a conversation with Jerry and Nate having, um, um, in the past worked directly with them. We was able to get on the phone and offer, um, assistance with bringing that back into the warehouse of the city of Washington. Now, a lot of money has been going back to other counties because when those applications don't be uploaded correctly, or they don't, or they missed their interviews, then that money goes back to other communities other than Washington. But by us being proactive and getting ahead of this before, um, these, um, appointments are going to be made to Augusta, we're now going to be having a training, and Jerry has put together a training that will be done at city hall on Wednesday. And basically from this back, once we get trained, we also can be able to train others. Hopefully until, we can, we can do this in-house until we can find collaborative partners that'll want to collab, collab with the EOA organization, the housing. But until then, we will be putting them at the district workers center. So do you know, if anybody don't know anybody that, if anybody know anybody that would like to take part in this training, we would do it at city hall on Wednesday. Is it, is it still at two P M.?
It is.
Wednesday at two P M. And, you know, that's one thing I think about this community, like, we step up to give back to our citizens and our elderly. They will not have to worry about going down to Augusta, trying to find a way to get down there. And we can talk about how much money that the EOA puts in our community annually. We're talking in terms of what, six hundred thousand dollars.
Um, but what we learned on that call is they, based on the availability of money that comes down from the state, then they kind of portion it out to the districts. And then based on population, they slide or allocate what they think we would receive in Woods County. Hundred, there was five, think of it in terms of five hundred dollars per qualified recipient. And they were planning to give it out to three qualified recipients. Hundred fifty thousand dollars for summer cooling assistance and a hundred fifty thousand dollar for winter heating assistance. And then they told us that they sometimes will get an extra infusion of money that then is given out to the general public. And let me, and what she explained to us is, they have, the, the overarching mission of this is to help the elderly, the seniors first, senior citizens. So the bulk of that money is really meant to go to senior citizens. And then they take any of the overflow money and open it up to the, the general public as she referred to. So we're talking about easily, you know, pushing a half million dollars a year, five to six hundred thousand a year that's, that's eligible to come into this county to help citizens who need help with their heating or their cooling or the water. There's water assistance programs. There's a mortgage assistance program. I mean, there's lots of programs that provide legitimate help to those in need. And what they were needing was what they call a local partner, local vendor. And so that's where hopefully we're going to be able to, uh, exert our voice with the, uh, Woods County, the Family Connection Board, and let that Family Connection Board be the local partner. It only makes sense. And I believe, Councilman Mahoney, didn't we hear that's being done in other counties already through Family Connection?
Yeah, and unfortunately, that was something that was sad to hear that we heard that they had tried to collaborate with our, um, WCCP organization. But because their staff couldn't get paid for doing the applications, they didn't, um, they didn't do it. But a great point was made that other communities like Macduff and Thompson, I think, won.
Lincoln too.
Yeah, Lincoln. They was utilizing their, um, WCCP organization. So Mayor, um, with Ms. Earn and with, um, Councilman Coles, actually being the representatives from the city, that would be a great driver point to help educate, motivate their board to accept them. And until then, you know, the city must, you know, step in, do our part. But hopefully, we can hand that ball off to WCCP or Red Cross or another organization as well. Um, I also add on here about, um, an action topic with, I've awarded so, but, um, I've been talking with our city administrator. I do think that we prematurely now, I want to remove it and get better language as to what the policy will look like as it pertains to curtailers of water.
And I was going to say, can, can you give, give us what the specific language you'd want?
Yes.
On that, right, okay. Okay. So we'll do that. Seven, okay. Councilman Anderson?
Very simple. Just the, uh, last month, we had an action item to adopt the, uh, the resolution of civility that was instigated and recommended by the Georgia Municipal Association. We voted five to one to approve it, and all I wanted to do is, the action is to, uh, recommend or request that we do that, not tonight, but tomorrow, I think. I thought the city administrator would be come by and have it, the official document ready for us to sign and request all of us to try to get by there tomorrow, if at all possible, and sign it and bring it to a closing.
Okay, good, good. All right, that's, I think they've recovered the city administrative topics. Now I have a matter for executive session. Um, and I'd like to adjourn the regular meeting at this point. I'd like to have a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe there are two items for executive session. If I'm not mistaken, one personnel and one real estate. And so your motion will be moved to adjourn for those two reasons.
Okay, okay. All right.
Remain here or go to?
I need to make the motion to adjourn, personnel and real estate. I so.
Make the motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. All in favor of adjourning to go into executive session, please raise your hand. Okay.